All right, everyone sent. Have a good meeting.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the six-foot-long meeting Thursday, May 11th, 2023. Hello here in South, going here at Town Hall. We have a post agreement. Do you have your second?
Second.
Uh, favor?
Hi.
Before we start tonight, I would like to use your statement. About some comments and reflection on our last meeting, which was held April 27th. And I am only speaking for myself. I do not speak for the board as we know. And after that meeting, I was unsettled by the perception that the board would accept a new driveway as a density bonus. And I went back to review all the decisions we have made in the Green Bush area. And keep in mind, as we know, no promises are made at any of those meetings. We make decisions when we don't really find it's a factor or not. Project is maybe too complex as this requires due diligence and much reflection. So as I was reviewing the issue of the density of August, I read section 580 from 4.3 E of the zoning bylaw. And it says that the planning board should be under no obligation to grant such a density bonus and may determine in its sole discretion whether the offered improvements are sufficiently needed scope or cost otherwise to justify such a bonus. The offering commitment by an applicant to provide all or any numbers on those enumerated sections do not in and of itself justify or require the planning board such a density bonus. So based on that review, I myself have concluded that the driveway, while a bonus for the applicant, is not a sufficient bonus for the town to consider as the whole of the density bonus. In other words, what I am looking for is a further bonus for this project. So it will be up to us to have a very involved discussion about what we think is a good idea. I'm not speaking to the board. You can speak to the board once time goes to comment if you'd like to debate about this. And I am just going to put a very personal thing to that. I probably should not have been at that meeting. I had had surgery, had a little bit of things came on. So I need not have been experienced. I should have been, and I'm sorry for that. So with that being said, good evening. So you can offer your project and we can re-talk. Like you know, would you want to read what we have?
No, you don't need to. It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
And it's already been ready to the record at the last time.
All right.
So what?
It said you just got, you got one new comment today.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you did get one comment, and you came from the fire department.
Yes.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. This is from Fire Department. Due to the location and limited access to the rear building on the site, the Fire Department plans to use McDonald Terrace for access to the north and west sides of the rear building near McDonald Terrace. The site plan on page seven shows a turnaround at the end of McDonald Terrace. If this turnaround is removed from the plans, the fire department will be impacted by our ability to operate at the building closest to McDonald Terrace. It would also put apparatus to back out of McDonald Terrace into a tight intersection at the corner of Ford Place. So I think what they may be looking for is a cul-de-sac.
A full cul-de-sac.
A full cul-de-sac at the end. Yeah, I'm just telling you this week's comment.
Oh, I, I, I read that. I read that. It said, you got, you got, you got a T there. The T is good. Don't move.
It's not a paved T. It's not a paved T. It's not a total video center.
So what was proposed on the plans, because if you go to the end of McDonald Terrace right now, there was no cul-de-sac, there was no turnaround whatsoever. Since day one, we have anticipated that the fire department want a turnaround at the end of McDonald Terrace. We talked about that last summer when we had our preliminary meeting in this room with the department heads. We've proposed a gravel turnaround at a T intersection at the end of McDonald Terrace within the paper cul-de-sac, if you will. That's been on our plans since day one for that very purpose. It's our intent to build it. It's been commented on several times during the peer review process. And at the last peer review letter, we made a statement that if it's an issue for us to install a turnaround at the town's situation, we won't install it. I see it as a benefit to the town to have a turnaround. It's clearly evident that the fire department wants a turnaround there. We've always anticipated it.
The fire department, I mean, I've been after trying to get a comment so we all knew where we stood for a while now. I asked last week, I asked last week, he was on vacation. He came into the office the other day. He, he had thought when he read the plans that the whole thing was paved. And so he mis, he misread the plans and he wants a paved turnaround. That, that's what, that's what he indicated to me. I said, well, you need to write a comment. These are important things to comment on because, I mean, as we all know, he's gonna, Fire Department is gonna get there however he gets there, but he's gonna come from both ways. He'll come down McDonald Terrace and he's gonna come from the other side. He thought the whole thing was paved because he saw the cul-de-sac fall. So now he essentially wants it paved.
He wants it paved, but he didn't put it, he didn't enunciate. He was supposed to somehow interpret that.
Well, that was, that was his comment. That was the best wording. I guess. I, I kind of agree with you.
It doesn't say. Say what you want.
It doesn't say, yeah. It doesn't say, but.
But that, that's what he, that's what he wants us to hear.
A turnaround is shown on our plans. It fits at the end of McDonald Terrace. Whether it's gravel or whether it's paved doesn't have, make any impact on the project.
So it can be paved.
Absolutely can be.
And if it is paved for the, for the cul-de-sac, I would see that as a public benefit to the town. Because you have two new multifamily developments on McDonald Terrace Ford Place and then this, that, that would be a public benefit. Did you have anybody else need to present to us or shall we go right to Mr. Chessia?
Well, I think this was yet, himself and Delmar and Burke, which John Sullivan, the owner. And so we have left a few more students and you can tell us to answer the questions, but. When we go to the commentary at the last, I thought we had a very good meeting, the last meeting. That's why I'm a little perplexed, Pat, is on the, we had a, I thought a very in-depth discussion about, about density. And one of the things the board was very clear about, they asked us if, if on twos, fours, units, twos is 60% as opposed to 80%, the answer is yes. And I thought that was.
That was, that was not clear to me as I searched you, and I'm sorry for that confusion. While I think, well, I walked away from that meeting with a slight misunderstanding on my part that we were taking the driveway as the total bonus. And that's, and I don't think that that's appropriate based on everything else that I agreed for.
And we heard what you said.
Okay.
We clearly discussed what the discussion was is that we said 60%, I said we had some of the construction financing people make sure it didn't give up. And we had, and we won't do that. And so we're thinking conjunction, I think.
It wasn't clear at the last meeting. It really, it was not clear.
Oh, so.
So that's, that's the difficulty. We walked away because you did say that you had to check the finances in order to see if you could do 60% or 80%. So I think that was, that is the confusion. So now you're saying that yes, you can come in at 60%.
Yeah, with frill.
Excuse me?
With frill.
So I, I think that part of that discussion will be after we hear from Mr. Chessia. And so I, we have those studies that we'd like to talk about as part of a density bonus. And, you know, we all think it's a good project. It's a big project and and you should know these studies take time, but certainly not coming into the second or third meeting when you're making decisions, you know, Mr. Armbray, please take a little ounce up to iron out. So, Mr. Chessia, would you like to talk about your thoughts, please?
Sure. And that, you know, a lot of the comments are similar to the previous comments that board has to look at this and look at that or whatever. Some of them I phrase more like a condition and presumably you have my summary pages here. So first one is, I think this is a problem because the applicant said they were gonna, but they, the two parcels should be combined. So you have one parcel and a setback if things don't apply. The wave, two waivers that are requested. One is the building height setback requirement, which I'm not gonna, I'm just listing it. I don't really want to get into the discussion of what I think about. Just, I don't really have an opinion on that. Crosswalk width, they do have an opinion on that. If they're all the same, why shouldn't they? I mean, I think it's an oddity in the regs that they're requiring a 10-foot when the sidewalk's on. I mean, it looks, would look kind of strange to have a six, five or six-foot sidewalk and then a 10-foot crosswalk. Crosswalks typically are a little bigger, but not that big. And that's a way.
And I just, I think I forward your correspondence. The director, DPW, was willing to weigh in the 10-foot wide last one. He wants 10-foot wide, he wants crosswalks. It's really just.
He wants them everywhere?
He just wants, it's really just a little bit more paint.
Okay.
So.
All right. Next one going down. Floodplain Watership Protection District, I think you did on other projects too, a condition that, you know, they get whatever appropriate things they need from the zoning board. Density, obviously you know that's an issue. You're gonna talk about that. The board should look at, you know, the screening, the landscape plan, the planting site, comp street trees and things of that nature because that's pretty simple. It says how many, but the other aspects, I'm not gonna, I don't have a lot to say on that. I'm not a landscape professional. Design Review Committee comments, not sure the status of that. I don't have been back and forth. Probably pretty close. You have to, you know, vote on the special permit for tandem parking. I think you should include a condition. It was talked about last time. I don't know that it's a problem either to get permission to connect the walkways to the MBTA property. That should be a condition. Make sure they can get that. I can't imagine it's a problem, but I don't know. Low-impact design standards, really the only thing they have there is the subsurface system and that's not necessarily even really a low-impact thing. Again, talking about landscaping. Then the next thing that the board should talk about and discuss is all, you know, amenity space things. There's various different types of amenity space proposed and to those, these are things I think that you have a lot of discretion towards. They like it or don't like it or whatever. The same is true of public realm standards. Furnishing zone was one thing that's listed. They don't have room for it according to the response letter. I get the crosswalk again, but again, that's not gonna be with it. So we should pick that up. You've already started discussing affordable housing. We need to continue that. At the last meeting, like what they're adding is about four spaces where the existing curb cut and access is. They're putting the spaces there and the board defined that that would be okay, I believe, at the last meeting. You may want to include a condition that the plans list the area of lands subject to coastal storm flowage in the total riverfront. Specifically, there was discussion on altered area, but it probably should just be very clear. This is this, this is this. The lines are on the plan, but that section in the site plan view requires that you list it. I'm not sure where the water and sewer department reviews are at this point. But I know that's the concern on all of these, that they, everything is gonna work okay. And relative to stormwater, there's not too much there. There's no outlets so that they would meet the requirement one. Peak discharge rates, there was a comment in my prior go-around about bypass, particularly there were three places, but there's two catch basins at the intersection with New Driftway and then there's one sort of at the access to the gutter. They did calculations. I mean, the access to the gutter, the flow was almost equal to the width. So the width, what I look for with these, you have a curb or a berm and you got a cross-section of road that slopes like this. If you drive down a road in a rainstorm, you frequently see water is wider in the gutter than the catch basin. And if it is, it bypasses and their calculations indicate that it would. If that bypasses, then it changes all the hydraulic, hydrology calculations. There's not, everything goes into the infiltration system. So the simple answer there would just be to put a double grate on each side of the intersection to catch the whole width of flow. And I mean, they can do it differently, but I think that's not an unreasonable condition. It doesn't, it's not that big of a deal. But I'll let them respond on what they think about that. Also a condition to confirm soil underneath the system, which I think is kind of boilerplate on everyone you approve. But I would, I wouldn't want to let it slip through. TSS would, would be met, but they did overestimate on the first defense. They gave it an 80%. Should be 50. I just say that more because next time around, it's like, well, you approved 80 here. And it shouldn't be approved for 80 by the board. It should be approved for 50. For subject, you know, they have their calculations right, but other than that. Condition that you, they submit a stormwater losing prevention plan. And I recommend that that be approved by the board before construction started. For that, that's all I got.
I'd like Greg to talk to this. We got the matters here and there. But this, this phone to the zoning board appeals and will turn the very first meeting, very first issue, I address this. And so maybe after a few, four meetings later to doing this, but again, I don't even see this. It's just sort of a conceptual. See that orange there? That's what we're talking about. Yeah, it's like, it's like 10 square feet of sidewalk. Number one, accessory use was excluded from 470. Greg started to talk about, vocal about this. One, it's not a structure in his opinion, so it doesn't apply. Two, it's accessory use. It doesn't apply. And three, the law is you can't pile a special permit on a special permit. You, you folks have done the stormwater. You have a special permit granting authority and it's, it's de minimis and it's, and it's about three or four reasons why it doesn't apply. And, you know, beg 90 days on it, but in other words, if you're, if you want a letter from the zoning enforcement officer, that's not. So that's something that would have a, no.
Well, what we're gonna say in a decision is if you need a permit, the planning board is not the special permit granting authority for the Floodplain Watershed Protection District. That is the ZBA. So if you need a permit, we're not granting you any relief in that district. If you need a permit, that's your responsibility to go and get it. That's, that's pretty much what we're saying, we all say.
Well, it's fine as long as it's not a condition. I'm perfectly comfortable it's in effect.
Well, we'll, we'll be saying it as a condition that if you need anything from them, that's your responsibility. The planning board is not that special permit granting authority. That's, that's.
Well, that's what the law is here.
Right.
So should we attach the general law to the decision too?
No, we just want you to be aware of that. We may not give this to myself.
Well, I'm well aware. We've investigated it. We resolved it, but what, what I'm, you know, I just don't want to get trapped into superfluous language that creates ambiguity. Obviously, when I say we'll comply with all the laws, that's great. That's exactly what we're gonna do.
And we like to do it.
Yeah, and, and just to talk to a couple of these things and join, most of the things that John, so that I think Greg tipped you. He's like, we're gonna address all of those. And just a couple of things by confusion is just, and this is probably semantics. The, and the whole thing is the design review board already weighed in. We've already had a few discussions on this and it isn't a height issue. It's a step back issue. It's a big difference. Height has to do with the height of a building, I think.
Right.
Karen agrees with me. So that's not correct. So, and again, designer view likes it. And I assume, presuming if you're getting to there, you know, going to that. And as we discussed, and I don't mean to be redundant, but all these matters have been discussed in very detail before, is on the tandem parking, you are the special permit granting authority. So you can do it. And the simple thing is we more parking we need, we think having more parking is a good thing. We're designating those for specific residential owners. That's a lot of them. And separate and distinct from that, you're allowed to do a waiver. If, if you're not, if you're not allowed for a waiver of parking when you will buy the MBTA facility, I don't know what the heck to get. And we did that because it's always a good idea because no matter what the bylaw says, people have parking. But, you know, it's as simple as, but the long and short of it is you meet all the criteria of that anyhow.
I will tell you, and I have said it before, I will not vote for tandem parking. I think it can add more problems than it solves. And I think that, you know, it sounds good on paper and we have your homeowners association. These are all rentals. I'm in a mixed-use building and we have people that do, it's almost unforcible. So you do not, you can get for other people to vote for this. I will not, under any circumstances, until right now, vote for tandem parking on any public situation like this. I will not. I don't like it. I don't want it.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes.
All right. So you have an excess of parking more than what the bylaw requires. The bylaw allows a waiver of things when you're in a transit area. So there's a couple of ways to do this, but having extra parking, I can't conceive of how that's a negative thing.
I will not vote for tandem parking.
Okay, we got that.
That's it. End of discussion as far as I'm concerned.
Then if that's the case, if the other board members do that, then I'll ask for a waiver, remove the tandem parking and whatever. Or plus the MBTA.
She's going one on one.
That's a set.
This is the tandem parking that you're gonna assign to that one building?
Correct.
No, no. If you assign it to two bedroom units, there's two bedroom units in the back building and the front building. Because a tandem parking has to be assigned to the same unit. So both back and front have.
Okay, so someone in the front.
Someone in the front.
It's assigned parking.
It's assigned parking. It's gonna have, yes, assigned parking.
And it is, and I'm just, I didn't mean to be hitting this randomly, but Greg said last time, getting the connection with the MBTA for the sidewalk, we'll do that. That's, that's a non-issue.
So the old question I have, and I don't know if I'm reading this wrong, but are you using the old zoning bylaw for the setback setback?
No.
Okay, something in the paperwork said you write a waiver.
Yeah.
On that. And so I was confused.
I was confused.
So if we can just clarify, if, I mean, we can clarify that. I just need, you know, at some point I'm gonna be writing what the waivers are and I thought that you asked for the old zoning bylaw because that was what's on the plans. But I believe all the discussion was based on the current zoning bylaw.
Jimmy, that applies to current zoning. It's the current.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just double checking.
Because we went to the design review first and they asked for the metrics on it. Went there the second time. We provided the metrics in a cross-section. They wanted a different metrics, which we applied to whatever. And I understand the letter they gave you is they're satisfied and they recommend the setback.
We have to make findings of fact, et cetera, and I'm just, I have to be very careful to make sure I'm getting the findings of fact worth. That's why we're asking for clarification on that.
I'm gonna avoid ambiguity.
Right, we're trying to avoid ambiguity.
That's, that's good.
Let's just get it clear.
And Greg, I mean, it would have John said this.
Yeah, discussing landscaping, the amenity space in front of the building, the furnishing zones. The furnishing zones, how those are designated in the bylaw, those are inside of the public right of way. And there just isn't enough room inside the public right of way at this location. Driftway is limited in width because of the existing bridge. Figure one on page 159 on the zoning bylaw shows essentially what's a really wide sidewalk. Where you'd have a spot where pedestrians would walk through. You'd have a spot for benches. A typical like Newberry Street, Boston layout, it's not conducive at this location to have a furnace. That's how we. Landscaping, we've received pretty minimal comments regarding landscaping. We had a registered landscape architect put a plan together. Steve Tomasi has tons of plantings on it. Aside from quantifying that we comply with the number of street trees, I think that's essentially the only new aspect that John's done of the landscaping of this. Very well detailed. It's very well put together. We haven't received any comments on anything else on the landscaping.
I asked Ben to, I asked Ben to review the landscape plan. As a registered landscape architect, I reviewed the plan and I have a couple of issues. One issue is that it's not, the plan is not signed by the registered plans for architects. I think that could be a problem now. I also have a problem on the landscape plan that you're showing sightlines and other things. I think the landscape plan should be the landscape plan.
We were asked by the board at the last meeting to have the sight, sightlines do this to make sure that landscaping wasn't in the site prime. That was specifically requested by this board. That's why we did that. We didn't have that opportunity.
I, I just don't think it belongs, I don't think the sightlines, no storage, I don't think belong on a landscape plan. They belong on a site plan.
I could take it back off. That was added again at your request.
I mean, I think it should go on, one of the site plans, a site plan. What do I ask him who we sort of sign?
Or Steve, Steve Tomasi, he's provided, provided his professional stamp on it. You see it right about this type of block there? I just don't think he has a digital signature.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I sent, I asked Ben to comment on the plan. I didn't think the plan, I didn't think the landscape plan was, I, it's, it's reasonable.
Yeah.
And it's reasonable and.
That, that's the, that's my general opinion in terms of the layout and quantity of plantings. I mean, I think for your big screening of the on-site risk fortified, a speck of fortified is a little bit small for a big project like this. So, I mean, that could definitely get beefed up. Also there, you're, there's a lot of trees going there just to consider that are, they're great trees, but they're not frequently encountered in the driftway area. So just question to think about the longevity of some of these plantings and also particularly like the size of some of them, like a London plantry and a European beach get quite large. I mean, won't be a problem in our lifetimes, but just to can be mindful of the space thing that they're going in. So. And but more, more what I was, they're just trees that I don't see in that area. So I just, they're gonna have to be well taken care of and well solved in order to survive, I think.
Especially the king go-to.
Yeah.
You wanna make sure you have the right, you know, wanna have one that produces fruit because the fruits are extremely smelly. And I was concerned about the landscaping on the side of the property. It seems like there's a lot of the same, it's a lot of the same species. And if there's ever some type of blight, all of those, all that hedge would be wiped out.
Is there any spot in this landscape plan for benches or picking table? Anything? Where?
Yeah, we have a pathway between McDonald Terrace and the parking lot that has benches. I believe it has a gazebo on it as well. It's common yard space, kind of where the cursor was that Charlie just had up.
Is there another, I think there's another page with that comment.
The site layout plan would show it as well, which is page five of the plan set. Landscape plan shows the gazebo along the walkway.
My hand.
This guy also identifies four benches to be placed along the walkway, along building B as well.
They're right, they're right back here.
Now the bench further, further down.
Two of them over closer to the MBTA path, four of them.
Right, this here.
So the gazebo is just, so.
So I question why there's no benches by building A?
Right around building A is the sidewalk to the entrance to the building, which is office space on the first floor. Versus the benches that we have are up along the walkway, you know, where you have outdoor recreational space, residential space.
I just question are the benches outside people's windows? That's, that might be an uncomfortable situation for some people.
Wait, wait, Karen, you're talking about the two that is at the north of building D.
Yeah, there's four, there's four of them. I just question why some of those couldn't be something put around building A, because there was no benches down by building A.
It might be some room on the east side of building A.
Yeah.
I just love continuing down the answer list, but could I just continue down the answer list? So could I ask a question in that if we're talking about placing of benches, that sometimes if we do this too early in the process, we walk ourselves into a sidewalk and then we wait until we see maybe, if we go right into a decision, that we don't gotta have SMI benches, could we do that at a later time when we can walk around and see what we think? No?
I hope theoretically, Ted, but what I'm just trying to do is, how do we get clear direction, that's what we want? Because I don't wanna come back to the next meeting, we're talking about benches. If you, if you wanna say move two benches, can you stick them there, great? If you say I don't like ginkgos, get rid of it, fine, but you gotta tell us what it is, because we've been on.
So what I'm, so, so what I'm gonna say is that, you know, when we go back and we look at projects that we've done, right near you, which is where a lot of them are, and we look and say, wow, we probably should have done this instead of that, or flipped that around. So then we can then go back to the owner of that property of us, and to do that nine times out of ten, we do. All this on the process is that instead of saying that we need four benches here or two benches here, if we say that we're gonna have a total of six, seven, eleven benches, and if we go further into the project and we see how much space we have, then we could.
Allocate them.
Allocate them appropriately, where they need it. I mean, is that something that we cannot do, or we can, we can, we can make those decisions that, and then maybe at the end of the day, we go, we don't like, or we'll be three. I mean, you just don't know sometimes until you're right there, so.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no problem with being, with onsite adjustments.
Yeah, okay.
But what is a problem is from, whenever you're in construction, finance, you gotta have some certain. And so you can't have moving pieces where, where it's perceived that you, you, you can stop the construction or something else. Say, there were total of ten benches, and if there's four of them up front to say, hey, during construction, you know, we applicant, oh, we're cooperatively with the board to finalize the positions of those of the, let's say, that's fine. But they have a condition to something like that, it's a problem, it interferes with your. And we have to give, we have to give zoning payments on other projects. What people wanna know is, I lent you the money here to build this, that halfway through the project, it doesn't come to stop. You gotta say, okay, well, that bench is in the, move.
Like.
I don't see what you're saying there, but that's not what we're saying.
So we can't ask the question?
That's, that's.
No, it is not what we are saying. What we're saying is, we want six or eight benches, end of story. Where they're going to go is predicated on once your construction is finished. So you take your six benches and you put them where they are most advantageous. That should not affect your financing others on the back that you have to pay for six benches. It's not gonna hold up your construction, it's not gonna hold up anything.
That's not true. And you've already said we're a hundred percent for that, so I don't mind.
So, fine.
Okay, so one thing about the, the benches, just in general, I think might be a good idea, because like Karen said, like people being uncomfortable with benches right up against the windows. Maybe whatever, however many benches you want, or wherever you wanna put them, they should probably be tied to these, these walkways as opposed to being tied to a building. So you're gonna say, four benches, like, okay, four benches along the walkway, but the gazebo not in, you know, not messing around with whatever the final landscaping plan is gonna be, that's, that's all.
I think that's what we're saying.
Oh, okay.
I really do. They're movable, with nothing changed or cemented.
Just give us a little more, so again, we'll point that if we do that, that we could.
Absolutely, yeah, that's all.
So like I said, it's just that, so we're not tied absolutely to the landscape plan for things that can be moved. Obviously, trees can't be moved, but not with the process, but things like gay booze chairs.
The gazebo stays because it's a structure.
So it's a structure, so I, I think that that could give us a little more flexibility.
But, and, and a, and a lot of decisions, the, the way it is, I, I guess the best way to handle that is on things like this, that, in the flow of this thing, that in other words, the delegate to the town planner, that we don't have to come back to a public meeting to establish.
Oh, right, no, 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 that's not the intent, that's not, that's not, that's absolutely not. I would just say six benches scattered through the site towards the walkways to be located during construction.
Fine.
Something, something like that, something very simple.
And, and, and add, Karen, especially, because you don't know how that could work for us, it's not.
But no tandem benches.
No tandem parking.
No tandem benches.
No tandem benches, no tandem bicycles. No tandem bicycles.
No bicycles.
No, not, no, unicycles, okay.
Okay, but no tandem bicycles. So I guess it's all kind of administratively, and Karen could do a lot of that, that's fine. So you need to move the walkway, that part of the landscape plan, that way. You bend and you locate it, it matters. So if you have any other tree, those are, I don't know, ginkgos, it doesn't have fruit, I don't know what those are.
I, I don't either.
They're nice trees.
Male and female.
It's male and, it's male and female, you know?
All can, they are male.
If you wanna see example of ginkgos, the street would be drafted, that's what would pass.
They're for.
Well, how do you know what the tree I know?
We're not doing that tonight, that's what all the agenda now.
Right.
So if, like I said, so if you have a ginkgo, and you, and you can, like I said, a lot of that is in the street, which you've got, so.
Which is fine.
Okay, thank you. So the limited work for phase one, you said show, are not showing?
Yes, it is, we actually submitted two different erosion control plans, which are probably pages two and three of the plan set. Showing how you would access the site for phase one, which would be the destruction of the, of the primary parking lot in the front building. It's actually the next page, sorry, I apologize. Now, we would first essentially cut in a driveway and pave the driveway off of new driftway for access onto the site. You know, you don't want us coming in off of McDonald Terrace. That would be paved as a temporary driveway right off of that for phase one construction. And then phase two construction is the rear building, which is shown on the next page. We've identified on that where the material storage area could be, you know, where the contractor parking is for that back building, which is a relatively small project at that point, because the, the big parking lot has already been built.
And all the infrastructure.
So, and all the infrastructure is in. And at this, at this stage here, while that back building is being built, that's, the River Shed property, if you will, to the left, has been connected at this point to our parking lot, who's sharing that driveway. Their driveway has been closed off during the phase two construction.
Phase two or phase one, please?
It's the last piece of phase one.
Okay, so.
So during phase two, River Shed is accessing this property.
Okay, I found the limited work very confusing for phase one, I'm being quite honest with that. So I think that needs clarification. The plan says, just so the board understands this, that the initial delivery of equipment to the site to put in the construction entrance and erosion control is for McDonald Terrace.
So let's, let's talk about that now.
Nice job, okay.
You have to get an excavator onto this site to cut some trees down, to remove some soil. Excavators go up and down McDonald Terrace on a fairly regular basis in the past couple of years with the construction over there. This is one delivery to the site of the machine. It's either that, or the machine gets dropped in the new driftway, which is much more traffic, has a vertical granite curb, and it's much more, it's much harder to access the site to do that. This is just for the cutting in of one driveway. So we would have one excavator come down McDonald Terrace and get dropped off, so we can access the site.
Why couldn't you come in from Burwick's property off the new driftway and go up that way? And not touch McDonald Terrace?
Whoa, you might break.
It's not that bad.
It's not that bad.
It's not that bad at all. And those are the trees that have to come down. There's no reason why your excavator can't go in that way. We walked it yesterday.
I walked it in.
Yeah, just to share a granite. Was that, have we got a granite?
At the end of McDonald Terrace, there is not a between the two properties. But theoretically, you could, I guess, I, and to seeing the trucks that already go to this site on a daily basis, I thought one delivery isn't gonna be the end of the world, but if it is, they could access over the bur.
So could I ask you a question, Mr. Moore, so we bring the excavator in?
Yeah.
Actually, you wanna excavate, you better check it out through the driftway?
Correct.
So it's just gonna make a big cloud through. So we're talking a day, two days, eight days, or less?
Probably two days to construct it.
Again, I.
Temporary, right.
You could go in, as you go into that driveway, which will ultimately be blocked off theoretically. And if you go to the right of the ice house, down a little bit further, towards the new driftway, it's almost a straight shot. Which to me makes far more sense. I know there are trucks that go in and out of there, but then again, we're trying to minimize this.
I, I, I would say that, you know, if you're talking about a single delivery of an excavator, I'd much rather have to do it over there than have a truck on the driftway or a truck blocking access to where there's other commercial properties.
But you can't park on the driftway.
No, they can't, that's what happens.
That's always a condition, you can't park on the driftway.
I know, but you have to get that truck, you have to get it in.
So they could go into the seventeen new driftway parking lot.
There's plenty of room there.
There's times when that's not, or, you know, they, they're gonna be doing this early in the morning, when people aren't really mad.
I, I just find it, it's, it's sort of the minimalist impact in one way or the other. That's just my opinion.
I see that, sorry, I can't see that.
So can we ask that?
They prefer to come this way?
So can, can I ask that, that, so we can wander this, that if, that excavator can start through McDonald Terrace, that is the only piece of equipment comes that way, because you'll have made a driveway that can then go through the new driftway?
Yeah, that's, that's the only.
I think that's what you've said, right?
Yeah, that's what the plan said.
I frankly think, just my opinion.
There's already a cut through on the property at the end there, so there are not, even though it's, there's not a lot behind the ice house that they have to cut through, it's still the, I mean, still the one delivery, you know, on that, on where it already exists, so they can get into the property, it's not about that, cut your way in and then cut the.
All right, so I think that there's probably a decision that can be one delivery, because one would be all, that we would allow to go through McDonald Terrace. And then it will grow out, and there will be no other equipment on McDonald Terrace. Do we agree to that? Is that pretty well, well?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Come on in, okay. So we have reached a consensus, we could all be, we could all come to a consensus, we could take it nice and slow.
And we don't have an indirect review in there, profit for.
Well, you can't let Joe do that, okay, do everything, not pay for it, do that, maybe drop a lumps. Um, so would you do all of it with John's comments?
Uh, no, the comment regarding seven seventy and John raises about whether I should add additional areas of the riverfront area, lands subject to coastal storm flowage, et cetera. I'll add any of those that the board wants, it's easy for me to quantify those. Typically on a site plan, we list the lot area, and we list the upland land area. This light, this site is entirely upland land area. I show the flood plain, I show the overlay district, if you want those square footages, I can add them. Those are typically not required on a site plan, I've never put those on a site plan in the last twelve years of business.
Karen, for it to have someone cycling?
I'll get back to you on that, I'll, I'll get back to you on that. I mean, if, if it's required, then it should be on the site plan. It's, it's under seven seventy G, it should be on the site plan. I mean, I know the planning board does not actively have those jurisdictions, but I think you are supposed to identify resource areas.
So they, they are identified, again, they are shown on all the plans. The lot areas are calculated. Specifically in zoning bylaw, in lot areas, it includes wetlands as bordering, which could weapons. It does not include, what are it means? People who have watched in flood plain districts, it's up in there all the time.
This, this is including two line areas, but.
Yeah, it doesn't need.
It doesn't seem like it's that hard to do.
Regarding the green, the double catch basins, those are easy to accommodate, we can do John's recommendation on that, no problem. The water and sewer studies, Weston and Sampson was the contractor that the town wanted us to hire to do the studies. They have done the studies, they have not found anything that's prohibitive with this project. Before they released the studies to us, they actually submit them to the town situat, the water and sewer departments for their comments, before we, as the applicant, even see them. They haven't been submitted to the water and sewer department at this time. So I'll.
And, and are there any open comments?
It's still a, it's still in draft form, are there any open comments? Not that I've seen, but I've been told that Mr. Cafferty hasn't reviewed it yet.
Okay.
I mean, so I think that, you know, we just have to wait till we get the final, and I think it's gonna come back, that there is capacity, that there is capacity in both departments.
Okay.
That's all.
Yes. I looked at the grading plan, the grading plan is hard to read. I think we need more squat grades to show how the grading works. Existing contours are usually screen and have proposed more bold. And I think you have to look at a couple places where the contours, contours don't go through curbs, they go, contour just doesn't go through a curve like that, it's an inch curve, it's gonna go up the curve and down somewhere. So I, I think that the grading is very hard to read. I think it would be helpful to have more squat grades, because it's, you know, somebody's gonna be trying to build this. Love to have one current revised set of architecturals, because when I start making findings of fact, there's a lot of architectural stuff for the standards that you have to make findings of fact. And I just want to have one full set, building one, building two, everything. Monitoring agent, last time you said the monitoring agent for the affordable units was gonna, you, we're gonna contact Metro West Collaborative, is that still your intention?
Yes.
Okay. Technically, they're going to need waivers on some submission at this time of some affordable stuff. And you've, you've waived that before. That technically, they should have submitted more stuff, but, you know, when, when you don't know a project's gonna be approved. They need four affordable units. And I've gone back through the stuff, it's all rentals still, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any, it's very hard to see on the plans. Any clear dimensions from the property line to the building, not just the one bump out, but from other areas? If this project is approved, you have an estimated start time and approximate length of construction.
It depends on when the project's approved.
It depends on when the project's approved. It's approved on January first, and obviously the start time is, it's approved on, on July twentieth, right?
And my suggestion is how old do you think this project deserves to be? If it was perfect weather? What's our construction entry?
Depends on the, well, well, whatever, it's been reading for three years, let's supply chain.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Build as fast as you can.
And so I guess that leaves us, um, with.
Excuse me, I, I have a point, I'd like a point of clarification, Karen. It stated at the last meeting, I think Mr. Orber said that the affordable rentals, because they call them, but the whole thing counted, all of the apartments counted. But they don't. They do not count toward, um, the ten percent.
No, only the four local action units will count.
Right.
So even if it's twenty percent, Karen?
Doesn't.
They don't count, right?
No, the way our bylaw is written, that is.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter on the bylaw, it's how the state looks.
Well, get me an interpretation.
Sure, just didn't go acid before.
I mean, get me an interpretation and we'll certainly look at it. I, I am not, I'm not.
We'll get better than interpretation, we'll get, we'll get with the waters.
That's why I wanted a point of clarification.
Property line setbacks to the building are shown for every corner of this building issue. I, that's it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to write finance effect and conditions, and so I'm just trying to do my job. So I guess that the last major data issue is to go over what the full, what the density bonus is for, there are thirteen units are allowed by right. They go up twenty, that's a density bonus of seven units. So that we all can understand what the density bonus is and determine if that is sufficient. My understanding of the density bonus is that it is two units at eighty percent AMI. Two units at sixty percent AMI. It's the relocated driveway. It is the, um, building the cul-de-sac to town standards in McDonald Terrace. We, last time you said you did not see the handicap walk improvements in the driftway, that's part of standard operation, a part of the project. Last time you said the turning lane extension was not a public benefit. Um, it's the walk to the MBTA easement a public benefit without any type of approval letter. I understand.
Anybody else?
Is there, am I, is there something else you're offering, or did everybody misunderstood what you're saying in your density box?
I can, I can rattle off another nine things that you consider for that, but it doesn't matter, you're gonna, either the project's good or we, or we redesign the project. I was under the impression at the last meeting that by, if we had the other things which we had, as, as I said, I know I'm gonna retrade grounding, but unfortunately after. Uh, the location of the driveway, at least, police, everyone else says it's, it's one of the worst sections in town. Uh, we almost paid a lot of money to do this. We can do this project without doing that. And that's what we talked about for two and a half years, and at the first meeting, said, please tell us if, if it's not important, because if it's not important, there's a heck of a lot of other things we can do here. And I thought the consensus was, it is, it is important, so I can, I can split hairs and come up with a whole bunch of other stuff, but the project as shown, as discussed today, is what that is, and we feel we need the, the requirements for the density bonus. And if the board doesn't feel that way, please tell us, because we're back to zero, and we gotta, we gotta do, whatever we gotta do. So we're gonna redesign the buildings, we're gonna do something different.
So let's stop here and say, yeah. Density bonus will be calculated if you agree to do the turnaround that McDonald Terrace, the cul-de-sac. Uh, if you get a letter from the MBTA, that you have approval, uh, to connect. Uh, the location of the driveway, do you know is a benefit to the town and to the project, more importantly. Uh, all of that, and I don't need money for a traffic study, we'll give you ten thousand dollars for a traffic.
Well, you've asked for money on, correctly, every other project in the area for traffic pedestrian mitigation, and I don't see why this project would be any different.
But I think also the sixty percent, it just is.
We said that. So two and sixty and two and eighty.
Can I back up one second and make sure I heard this? John, I thought we, I thought we were paving a turner, not a cul-de-sac, a turn.
Well, I thought it might be.
Yeah, turn, okay, okay.
Semantics.
The, the thing that's.
It's a. Was that why you originally chose that?
That's fine, whatever you show me.
No, 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 not what is, what is shown there.
They want pavement.
More of a cul-de-sac.
Well, it's different, that's how I said it. He doesn't say that, and.
Well, that's what he told me yesterday, that's what he told me.
Well.
If I can get it, if I, I can have him come back in and talk to me, it's just more pavement in, in the whole ball. Not the, not the, not the turner.
We can't provide that no one will tell us. And this is absurd, at this point in time, the town's consulted through everyone else. Someone can't look at something for an extent of your time, it's like, I'm fearful of anything else, it's, it's whatever, it's dying of vapor, I see that. But tell us what it is, that's not what it is, let us know. And, and I don't know, I don't wanna be sitting here six weeks from now saying, oh geez, we haven't, uh, we haven't quite got the input we need on that, can you come back and argue?
So let's, let's, let's all think together, it, it will get the, the fire department, and let's, between us, interpret what we think it says. We are all, we've all been doing this for a long time. So what it says is, if this turnaround is removed from the plan, the fire department would be impacted by our ability to operate the building closest to McDonald Terrace. It would also force apparatus to back out of McDonald Terrace into a tight intersection at the quarter of four place. Now, most of them wants to do this all the time. Go and you build a road, and then you do a, we do a cul-de-sac, we go through a T, correct?
We do cul-de-sacs at the ends of roads, yes, we've also done T intersections. We have shown a T, as is up on the screen here, at this location for eight or nine months now.
And can I tell you that your frustration is only married by Karen's frustration waiting for a comment from the fire department?
No, we have to comment.
But it's ambiguous.
It says nothing about paving, it says nothing about a cul-de-sac, this is.
It's ambiguous and it's unfortunate.
No, no, it's very, it's very, very concise. It says, don't remove what's there, that's what it says.
And he's looking at the bulb, that's what he's looking at.
On the plan.
On the plan, there is a bulb. And that's what, that was.
That's, that's what's known as a layer.
Then that's what he's looking at, right?
Well, may, maybe we should have an engineer look at it.
If this turnaround is removed from the plan, so what is he, what is the turnaround on the plans that the fire department is talking about?
Well, I know, but that's what it's.
Why, why are we trying to interpret his comments?
Right, yeah.
Why don't we just go back to him, get a clarification, and then whatever they have said.
I will get, I will get clarification.
I mean, Karen's talked to him, so I think that's the closest thing we're gonna get at this point.
Yeah.
But if you want greater clarification, we'll just go back to fire department and get it.
Can you, can you do a.
I mean, how hard is that?
You can, you can run pavement all the way around there, yes, you can.
Is that, is that something that you guys can do?
Sure, it's the first time we've been asked warrant for a review service in a place that you don't need it. But if that's, if it's the new standard, let's just, let's just asphalt it up. It's absurd.
It's not a huge expense either. It's, it's not a huge expense.
Alright, so, so.
So it just.
We'll get, we'll get clarification from the fire department.
So we just need a clarification of the size from the fire department.
Yes, clarification, I will get clarification from size.
And you don't have to go back to the schedule.
Deal with that.
Deal with that, it was huge, right?
I don't know, I have no idea what's gonna come back, these are kind of random. I mean, not from, not from board, these are kind of random things.
No, no, the DPW made it in their comment as well.
I just read the comments, I read the comments and read four times, it says nothing about paving, it says nothing about.
This is the fire department, not DPW. DPW made that comment as well.
Let's just get what the fire department says.
I will.
There's no ambiguity.
I will get, I will get another, I will get.
We will get the specific response. Do you find that you're coming, then, then we will have to come back and address it.
So we're back to the, to the list of what we accept as density bonus, and our structure is ten thousand dollars, which we take, which we ask from everybody in Green Bush to offer us um, money for that, for Karen?
You're telling me what is that for? If you have any study, and you've already asked everyone else in the world for that, who, who gets to do the same study fifteen times?
Well, at some point, the town is gonna do their own traffic study to, because, yes, all, everybody's all done studies, but the town is gonna do a traffic study because people are going to keep complaining that it's very congested in Green Bush. We all know it's congested, and we all know that there are some limiting factors, you know, down there, and, but the town's gonna do their own study on that, but we need that money for.
Also, we want to, we want funds for the public good. Conservation Park or that would be all good.
So what we're talking about is, is a certain amount of money to support, for the town to conduct its own integrated traffic study. That make sense?
I understand, yeah, yeah, that's happened, but this is, again, a lot of slices, and what's this about the, 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 the conservation park, what, what else is there? Is there, is there a study there?
Good.
Oh, yeah?
There's not enough water, now that's just crazy.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, fish, they're crazy.
So if you agree to that, would we agree that that would be a density bonus worth it to the town? That's what we're asking, unless you have something else that you'd like to offer to us.
You said you could find things.
You know what I meant, existed things, I don't intend, uh, to build an osprey nest when you enter the property.
That's a suggestion that you've.
I think there's a lot of. Oh, no, the bottom, the bottom line, any of this is, board says we need ten grand, didn't they get ten? It's as simple as that, but I just don't know what next, the next, the next, the next.
This is the, uh, my report, this is, this is what I'm offering to, you can hope that you can offer, and that's what I'm offering to this density bonus.
So, is that it, everything's, everything's discussed?
McDonald Terrace turnaround, the new driveway and then the, um.
A letter from the MBTA.
Yeah, the sixty AMI, sixty percent AMI.
Eighty percent AMI.
Two minutes.
Yeah.
For two minutes, right?
Twelve minutes.
Yes.
Sixty percent is two minutes, right?
Yeah.
And then the traffic study.
And then the traffic study. That's it. And on the whole, that's considering, um, what we offered everybody else, which is above what we are seven, it should be above a hundred, probably two thousand. I can't do the math all that well, so we, you should take seventeen higher per unit, so we give, we're offering this, you could take the all.
I'm very excited, yeah.
Okay.
As long as, I, I don't know, the last meeting I thought we were.
And I'm sorry about that, Mr. Orber, and I was like, and I was saying that to you, and I, as I went home and I sat about it, I, I read all the other decisions that we made, and I said, this really is unfair to everybody else in that area, that, um, of what we lost to everybody else, and this is the, the, the project, and unfortunately, you should know the last guy always gets away, but you always have to pay for other things. But, um, I think that this is a fair offer for density bonus. If, if you say yes, then we can take a vote, and once you know we don't, then.
Yeah, I don't think we're voting on the project tonight.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, but you look at consensus, Karen, and I don't wanna get back to you six weeks from now.
We'll fix it, we'll fix it at this, we'll get the, the numbers back from the fire department.
We want a consensus that this is agreeable to everybody here, would you do that? Yes, would you do that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. We will need to hear from you if you think something changes from the fire department or whatever, right?
No.
Or the MBTA says no, you know, then we'll.
You're, you're careful with the extra pavement, though, you're gonna be encouraging commercial vehicles, that is.
Excuse me.
You're careful with putting more pavement there, because that's exactly what encourages a turnaround of commercial vehicles.
We're just gonna get that clarified at the fire department and the store.
I mean, there may need to be signage there, um, you know, no.
Get it, or whatever.
We're coming for the cul-de-sac.
No, no, all day parking, you know, so that certain people don't park in that cul-de-sac and that it is available, you know.
Karen, the street hasn't been signed for a year.
I, I know, I know, I've been down there often enough, but, I mean, these are, these are issues and, um.
And these are unenforceable issues on our part, so we would know that the person to call, we, we, the police or the building, whoever enforces that, that's out of, and I, I know it's frustrating to have sites that nobody pays attention to. To that side, and are you okay that this is a density bonus?
Fine.
So we have all agreed that this is, you will go as a density bonus. Mr. Orber, Mr. Solomon?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Okay, that's how I'm going to write, that's how I'm gonna write the, the draft decision out. And I will be in touch with you when I find out what the fire department says.
Yeah, you just circle back.
Can I, can I ask something unclear about, because I've been, dressed, on the whole landscape, I think there was a lot of commentary. Other than what we have, what is it that wants to do?
So no female ginkgos?
Well, what, what Karen, what Karen is concerned about is you have the same tree, so there isn't light, all of those trees regardless.
Well, I know, tell us, tell us what you wanna do, we know like, there were like thirteen suggestions.
Exactly.
No, that's not, that's not our job to design their plant. We can just say that in some experiences, when you have the same variety all along one property line, that if a light comes, all those trees may be decimated, you may have to replace them, that's, we're just, that, that's a, that's.
Some varieties within the rows of plants.
I mean, so if their landscape architect says that that's not an issue, well, we raised it and, you know.
So if it is an issue, they kind of come back to us and say, we're not gonna replace the trees. So they're gonna have to replace the trees, so that's.
I don't understand, what, what, we changing something, we're not.
No, no, we're not, no, we're not.
No, this is just, this is just like what the, I guess the high level, what came out of the commentary, just about the ginkgos and then, uh, uh, all of the, the trees that, you know, when they're in line, they're lining an area that some variety between those trees in a line, just in case there's a light, so that you're not losing all of your screen.
We're overthinking this, though.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just confused, Dan, I, I know Mr. Burrow's bushes are so fine, I would like to emulate that.
We can, we talked about construction cases, uh, and I, you, you wanted me to comment, uh, Ray killed us, it was construction one case that it showed to us. Uh, you want to comment about the construction I love you doing?
I'm concerned about building B. Because, and you were asked how long this project was going to take. Why can't both of these buildings be done at the same time?
They may, what, that may well happen again, but it's, it's a matter of thing, if you're gonna spend another million something to build, build it big. It might be nice to, and it all comes down to construction, it, it all comes down to construction. And, uh, but I don't understand, why, why does that matter?
Because there is always the possibility that it won't get done.
And if it didn't get done, wouldn't that be a good thing?
No.
Oh, that's good.
We would do it all at once. Karen, could you?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, but, but.
Excuse me.
And, and the, the other question is, that's where John's office is, we're talking to tear down the building and.
But then you get a lot, a lot of people, when they raise and reconstruct, rent our space until the project is done.
What, what, maybe we can just back up and say, okay, we finished phase one and we never do phase two. What does this finished property look like in that, so it says surface spaces? What does this finished property look like in that, so it says surface spaces?
And it comes down to the number of affordable units that you need too, because they need. Affordable units. There's two affordable units in the front building, there's two affordable units in the back building. We've been burned on that before.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with that.
So, in time, virtual, yeah. Big time.
Yeah, but the.
Go ahead.
You have a decision, so you have to provide four, four units. If you don't provide the four, four units, you're violation of decision, you're violation of zoning, you're violation of ordinance.
So you put the four units in building A, if you don't build building B?
And that is why you're building building B.
Well, I feel like I'm punching feathers here.
On the first, first day, we said, yeah, try and be disruptive. John runs business, it has a very, uh, broad use.
This is about the project and the project is building A and building B. That's what it's about.
I, I understand.
Therefore, I feel that they should be built at the same time. The dummy, oh, boom, it's done.
Well, I, I, I would say if, um, if they're facing things in, then. You have to be prepared for the eventual, if you don't do the second phase, you're gonna have to adjust a lot. To accommodate all of the requirements.
Yeah, absolutely.
Including the affordable housing units and all of that, so.
Only living buildings.
I, I mean, we just have to make sure that that's the case. We also have to make sure that if you finish. You don't leave the phase two area of light of some kind or other, right? So, I mean, all of that would have to be addressed.
Here, here's reality. Reality is, if you don't build what's on here, you can't, you, you cannot not do that. Unless there's a modification to the decision or in violation of law.
So they're gonna hold you to that, Mr. Arberg, because as you know, you've been a while old enough to know that we revert. By this, so we're just covering our bases that we're not left with, with affordable units that are not built.
So. Is, is there a way that we can suggest that after the completion of phase one. Phase two to start within X number of months of phase one?
Whether, whether permitted, yes.
Yes.
And that's what you're worried about, yes?
Yeah.
That is absolutely what I'm asking.
I, I think that's all we need, because if you don't get it done by then, then the permit. For phase two is gonna go away, you're gonna have to comply with everything under phase one. So you may have built units.
Oh, yeah, it's the same thing. It's these constructions for six months, you go with permits, right?
Well, this, that, this is the conversation we've had in the past with people who've gotten a permit to build the whole thing, but phased it in, right? And phase two never happened, ever, right? So, and we base the decision on the whole project, not just phase one, right? So that's all we're saying, is that we're basing this decision on phase one plus phase two.
Yes, the four.
I think it's fine, this is just my opinion, but I think it's fine to say, okay, build phase one. If you're still using the building in phase two, then that's all right, but it's not all right indefinitely, right?
I'm sure, absolutely.
And, and, you know, we might have to write it that way in the decision.
Right, so it's a reasonable, what is your first impression is a reasonable amount of months?
I would say within twelve months.
No, it's too long.
That's fine, it's fine, okay, I mean.
I'm sorry, it's too long.
I mean, all, all kinds of things can happen, right? Um, so.
But you were so.
But I, you know, I'm just saying twelve, if you want six, I'm getting six, good.
Six, cause I would assume their face.
I just, I'm gonna ask.
Except absent weather and accident. Now, they stopped construction in Boston for a year during, and that's all.
Well, I think, I think there should be an opener if there's, you know, extraordinary circumstances.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
You just have to come back and ask for a review.
Cause we're assuming that what we're going to phase one is what we're going to do. So we just gotta walk across the property block in this style, whatever, that, 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 that's a lot of over the case to. That's all. We just try to make sure that we have no ambiguity, I do like that, Charles.
What, what's with that, that?
So you have a, I'll say phase one is something definitive in terms of when phase two starts.
Yeah, we, yes, so you have a moment?
Do you, this is public, do you, you want to see if there's any public comment?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, can you have any public comments? Sorry.
If we have any public comment online, now would be the time to take that comment. You can raise your hand, um, on the bottom of your screen, on your Zoom screen. Um, and we are willing to, we will, I meet you, so you can make comments.
Are you telling me everybody watches, there's nobody talks to us?
And is there one in the audience that wants to?
I watch, I watch it later.
I like it, and would you have a comment in the audience?
Alright, I have, um. I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the court appearance, site plan administrative review. And special permit for Nick's building, and multi-family building, and storm work permit. In village center and neighborhood district, Rangoosh Gateway District, Rangoosh Village Center Sub-District. And Gateway Business District, VCN, GDD, GVC, and GWB. Until July twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM, and to continue the term of action for file with the town clerk until October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
You have a second?
Can I, can I speak on that? I, July twenty seventh, they're targeting, that's fine. What, what the hope being is, we're gonna. Have a pretty good consensus. Why do you need two months of finality?
I'm, I need time, I need time to, I need time to write a decision.
Three months.
And I need time on a, on a special permit decision. I let the consultant review it, I let the board review it, I let the applicant review it. And people don't respond immediately. I explained that there's vacation time in there as well.
I know, Ian, it must have been July twenty-seventh, but the, the fact that you files get going with the project, it pushes us into the winter where we can't do the project.
We're not pushing you into the winter. We're doing things as fast as we can.
October twenty-seventh, add twenty days, add thirty days for building permit. Add this, when did you hear, January? Just as you're aware, on one hand, it's, how can we get going? And they say, well, we're gonna close the meeting and vote this and give us three months to write a decision, that the decision is front.
It's not three months, it's closer to two.
Doesn't matter.
Yes, it does. And you know what? This is not the only project we have before. And this takes time to do this. It all depends to staff. And we want it right. We want it correct.
We only want to do one big project, and now, because it's not fair to the board and it's not fair to the applicants.
So what is the date of, of what?
July twenty-sixth.
I, I did July twenty-seventh, I, I were instead of file, what's the other?
That's for the date to file with the town clerk?
No.
No, excuse me, the date for filing, it means it could be filed. Before the twenty-seventh of October. This is a date, so it's now constructively approved.
Yeah, so it's three months, three months to file a decision.
No.
July to August, September, October, so we need.
That is not, we, we gotta done sooner.
We need ninety days.
No, we don't.
To do a decision. Whatever, it's in the winter, project's not gonna get going, and that's, that's what we want.
Hopefully we can get the second.
Bad.
We had a second.
We had a second, yes.
All of greater?
Well, we have second, is it all staggered?
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you.
Somebody took your hand off.
This is. Wow. That was interesting.
She's so wrong, I mean, oh, there's something. Give me a joke at the show.
Do you need members of the board? Form a A and R plan for zero-shape highway. Also, assess the parcel nineteen dash one dash fifteen F. Proven is parcel nineteen dash one. Alright, I'm centered, everyone's got their plans out.
Okay.
Alright, going back to you, I, should I introduce myself?
Exactly.
My name is William Eads, I'm from the firm, Joe, Touching Morgan, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Charlotte Fields LLC. This is an A and R plan for zero-shape justice cushion highway, which, what it is. Dividing assess the parcel nineteen dash one dash fifteen F and creating assess the parcel nineteen dash one dash fifteen H. Uh, this is a plan that does not require approval on the subdivision control law. Creates two lots or two halves of vision frontage on the justice cushion highway. And just for a little additional context, this is a parcel that was conveyed from the town to the applicant in twenty thirteen. And for. Specific history of what, I did not occur back then, but the A and R was never, uh, submitted that endorsement, so.
Supposedly access to the, for A B.
Yeah. Yeah. So this really is an administrative process for us.
Right, this really is an administrative function. There's already a deed, the deed is, the deed is done. And the deed is attached to the vertical legislature that was recorded with the deed. Catching up, I don't know why it wasn't done back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, but it's being done now. And I, it's got access and frontage and the board should endorse it.
So this is just administrative case. Um, the weird question for the board. It's not a public hearing.
You don't have to take public comment if you can, if you, if you want. It's not a public hearing.
Well, why don't we listen, since a lot of people came up, let's see what you have to say, we see not much they can do, if you have any comments, please. So, please identify yourself, please.
Francis Badger, twenty-three Forest Lane. The, the administrative delay here, I think, is sort of, um, putting it mildly. I don't know why the assessor's maps were never, I went to, uh, John Dennehy over two years ago to have him look into this and. To have this property, um, assessed and taxed by the town as belonging property as they are now looking to do. And it's never, it's still as the assessor map shows right now, it's still showing as conservation law. When they did their, um, wetlands review, they didn't show this parcel as part of their own property at that time, and that was in two thousand twenty-one. So it's, it's kind of, it's, it's the question why they, why they didn't do that. Secondly, um, they surveyed our property, Mackenzie did a survey of our property at Merritt Woods, probably about two weeks ago. And they drove stakes on the Merritt Woods property. And they never gave us notice that they were gonna come on the property to do the survey. And I am concerned why they are driving stakes on our property. And I've gotten no answer from that, um, we've had our attorney book interview with Mackenzie and he hasn't gotten an answer from them as well. Um, I don't know if this gentleman can speak to that issue as to why they were driving stakes on our property. We have lot lines that are defined by stone walls that go back to the owners who own this property back in the nineteen seventies. So I don't know why they feel the necessity come on our land to re-stake it and think, I don't know what those stakes prove. Do they think they own our portions of property on our, on our land?
I unfortunately do not have any expertise in these types. I, I don't know. Do you?
I can, can, I can certainly agree that additional survey was recently done with the property, but I cannot speak to the manner in which the survey was conducted.
Why, why is it conducted?
Is that, is that, is the survey reflected on this drawl?
No, no, no.
This, so that wasn't the purpose of that survey?
No.
Okay.
And I spoke to the assessor, the reason why the plan, the assessor's maps are not changed is because he doesn't have a plan to change it. This, this plan is the mechanism that he will be using to change the assessor maps.
This was land that town meeting gave away?
That town meeting, yes, yes. It was giveaway, it, it was a monetary exchange, yes.
It was a land swap.
Right, so.
A land swap, right?
Right, so, but it's all, this is just administrative, we catch up with the deed.
So it's just a lack of planning, by the way, she is going, you know, I would serve, you know that law, so.
Yes, we do.
So, uh, we can only tell you that unfortunately, it's been weakened on, yes, your question. I'll have to advise you to go to your lawyer to get hold of Mackenzie, I have no idea.
Well, I, I, I am an attorney and I'm asking them why they were doing that, and I can ask the gentleman here why they would do that.
I know.
And I haven't got an answer from him. I represent, um, I guess. Uh, Mr. Callahan, who's the man behind the, uh, Charlotte Fields project. I, I, they never gave us notice to come on our land again. I mean, they, they've been doing this for five years and they come on and off. And they never give a notice, condominium association, as is required by statute. And, uh, they just take it upon themselves to do, to do what I want to do and I want to do.
That is unfortunate and, um, we'll have to get orders to tell against the attorney, so look for that. Any other comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Silver and I live at twenty-one Forest Lane. And I share Frank's comments, it, it, you know, it's quite disturbing to have the surveyers come on the property without a ten smellers or what their intent was. To that end, uh, does the attorney here this evening have any comment on the proposed use of that property?
I do not, I, I'm clearly involved with this step of the process at the moment, so.
He's hoping to tell us that this is the new A and R way. So that's not the right way. And, and I share your frustration, I, I, I know it's, um, it's five days, well, I'm unfortunate for that, but hopefully. Mr. Callahan will hear us and respond to, to what we may, um, I don't know, we cannot solve that problem, unfortunately. We're willing to listen to you, but I don't have an answer for you, yes?
Just, uh, one more question. I, I'm, I'm concerned as to, um, who, who drops the ball on that? When that plan should have been, um, recorded or, or made known to the town, so the town could properly assess this property.
You said that a lot.
Is that the town's fault or is it the?
No, it's not the town's fault.
Not the town's fault.
It's not the town's fault.
Is there any, is there any, uh, remedy or any kind of, uh, recompense that, that they should be, um?
We're not, that's not the planning board's.
That's our, that's our.
We are here to approve in the A and R tonight, that's not in the plan anymore, it's your issue.
We, we, unfortunately, we share you, but we, we can't answer those questions.
We're only here to approve and approve will not require.
There you go, okay, that's good. Endorse.
Alright, I will swing to us as a school under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land, Ellis property, assessors map nineteen dash one dash fifteen F. Chief Justice Cushing Highway, subsequent mass by Richard J. Coe, professional land surveyor of Mackenzie Engineering Group. Date of five twenty-eight, twenty fifteen, for applicant Charlotte Fields LLC as the division of land. Is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required. By the subsequent zoning law on the public way of Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Your second?
Second.
On favor, I have five.
For the record, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morris engineer, representing the property owner and applicant Doug Grimes and Peter Cooney. This is a four A applicant, property that they joined me on, one forty-three First Parish Road. Property is about thirty-four thousand square feet in land size, it has no frontage, this is a land lot parcel. The proposal here is to divide parcel in two pieces, parcel A and parcel B. It would then be ultimately sold to the butters, which have frontage on Station Street. This plan is entitled to endorsement in the fact that it does not alter frontage, it represents a change in the property line. But neither parcel A nor parcel B themselves are buildable lots.
Yeah, we're stations. It's not by the post office, right? Yes, right past the five o'clock. Parachute, this is the heart of it, I got a move to the left. It goes up to the bus stop, thank you. Post office? Any comments?
I believe the plan should be endorsed, this is a conveyance change in lot lines, it does not alter the frontage, they intend to combine it with the two parcels.
Okay, thank you. I will approve this approval under subdivision control law not required, a plan of land, six-ounce mask, one forty-three First Parish Road. Assessor's parcel thirty-nine dash one, dash thirty-nine, six-ounce mask by Jason Scott, professional land surveyor of Gold Engineering Company, Inc. In April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, as applicant Douglas Grimes and Peter Cooney as the division of land is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the six-ounce zone highway. We are ahead of schedule. Well, that's a good thing, so you have obviously, this is what's wanted to be in our plan, so. Put in the minutes. I move to put the minutes from March around for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. On favor?
Aye.
I understand.
And then we have accounting, I will approve the requisition of one thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents to Morsley Witten Group, pay review services for fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way. Three thousand nine hundred dollars to tech aid for pay review services for more pool drives like three, four, or five. One thousand six hundred twenty dollars to tech aid for pay review services for five fifty-six First Parish Road. Or fifty-nine hundred to tech aid for pay review services at eight seventeen Country Way. For twenty dollars and ninety cents to data streaming for analyst subscription to the coastal mauer for one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars to Mowersmore for pay review services for eighteen annual water. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So we have, I have not much moving in some meetings, but I did listen to an NPC webinar about law, water law everywhere. Particularly about water and, um, what it takes to have those massive pumps that they need to see. And one thing we're talking about, which is really interesting, is that in Massachusetts, you don't have to tell somebody if you're living on a interstate or a road. But what's happening is there's more ways, I mean, the houses are sinking, and the water is flowing, and if you're going to make this, it's nothing for this project to do. So they talked about our five, um, that the insurance place where the water was like in a trillion dollars. And we've just even now, my sisters in the next town, we cheaply collect because they booked this huge shopping mall, it's a lake. And they just kept building it and building it, so it's just interesting that, um, people accuse us all the time of building on rentals. And we don't do that, like, we do build in the floodway, which is something like, so, I don't think any of them know about this. Although I know what the bar, but it's just the interesting thing about how everybody's losing on the foundation of the property values because of climate change. If you guys don't know, check, how it's affecting us, so about how much have you lost?
Nothing, I mean, lost like in my yard?
Yeah, so how much of the other marsh?
Uh, not that's noticeable, and I will say as far as like, um, NOAA, like the NOAA and like with flood risk mapping that's going on right now. There's, there's been no changes to the underlying data as far as long-term sea level rise over the, like, out to twenty-one hundred, then twenty-one twenty-eight. So the underlying data hasn't changed, the federal government, this weird thing where they front limited all of this, the supposed snow rise to the next twenty years for some reason, but I, I, at least in this area, like looking at coastal erosion modeling and mapping. The only big differences are the, it's, you know, it's a sandy spit, or it's a sandy shoreline. So you're, you're just going with that, naturally, it's not so much the proposed sea level rise, which is about two inches a century. Two inches, two inches a century.
Centimeters.
I don't know. So is my yard sinking? I mean, no, I don't think it's sinking as much as, you know, things from high level are kind of moving settling down into lower areas. But that's to be explained.
Well, it's like, because we want to always have time, and it was, it's far from the top, so. We have a wind, so is anybody else here talking?
Um, CPC met Monday night, and right now, we don't have any projects coming forward for long-term meeting. Although I think that they want, somebody wants to pick a ball courts, I'm not sure when that's going to happen. And I have a problem with that.
Fight on two of them there.
And then, um.
What is your problem with that?
Okay.
Let's do it as a show.
So Massachusetts grown in North America. I know, and everybody's suffering from all kinds of injuries, so it's a world, yes. Oh, I read that, it's big, right? You live longer if you play racquetball.
There you go, I put the broken arm and everything else. So next day, um, the other thing to watch out for is the tennis courts at the high school, and that's approximately two hundred dollars to reconstruct and add another tennis court. We, CPC really doesn't have the money at this moment in time. It might have to be pushed out until the spring. I had the financials around here, so. Um, the rent department might be looking for, DPW would help them out with purple dinosaur, or fix, then some of the golf fields want new backstops. And people are still parking on first, on Speedy and Road, even though at Roach Field, we can build a parking lot that makes a lot of sense. That's all an enforcement issue. Um, the total estimated, estimated revenue for twenty twenty-four is two million seven hundred twenty dollars and two hundred, two million seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, almost twenty-one thousand, a lot of money. And we're getting the trust fund distribution for twenty twenty-two is approximately just under seven hundred thousand. So that's added in, um, we need to put ten percent, which is two hundred seventy-two thousand and change into open space community housing and historic preservation. Um, the maximum administrative expense is one hundred thirty-six thousand. And an alternate administrative expense is sixty-eight thousand, and we don't spend any near that kind of money. Um, the revised estimates for, um, twenty twenty-three, two million eight hundred fifty-two thousand. So it's, we're going to rescind some stuff. We'll go back five, two years, like then we'll just go to areas, and then I went to the.
What do you say, rescind?
Rescind, no.
The things that didn't get done, maybe just got withdrawn?
Not extra money.
Extra money, the money they didn't want to spend, as, as an example, a little red schoolhouse, this, um.
So it's just, just they underspent, so.
They underspent, and money's coming back.
It was rare.
Um, no, it happened, so it happens, it doesn't, yes, and it's my understanding that it, of the, there's a big kerfuffle over with the trails, the park, the parking spaces, et cetera, with the dam and so on. Last year, the prices were so exorbitantly high, and we had to give more money, and penny prices, and this year, we may be getting one back. All that's left to do for these different parcels are some picnic benches, and that's it. Then it's done, and signage is up, and things are moving pace. So, um, one of the outstanding things is Sunset Road, first foot, whatever. And then, there's an issue at Mordecai Lincoln in terms of somebody has kicked out a tree, parking, and then the property, what are we going to do, and how are we going to do it, and so on. So it's just discussion. And then, of course, I would just see if any questions were about it. But I went to the selectmen's meeting, and my major question on that body was, I need them to explain to me why Mulaney's Fish Market needed an entertainment license. An planning entertainment license, which they got for seven days a week to entertain the fish. I don't know. So that request of Mulaney's to come back and maybe for change of views. They are running a restaurant, they are running a restaurant, they claim they're not, but as far as I'm concerned, and they're having people there all the time, they go before the selectman continually to, and they were here again on Tuesday night for, um, an event, whatever that might be. And yes, some of it benefits the town, but then again, then also to the selectman approved a legal license for the theater so that they can make a little extra money, and that was supportable. And then the other one was the galley, and he wants, he wanted three parking spaces because his, to be used for outdoor seating, and the problem with that is because his parking space is in front of his place, unlike Hybernia and Salt Society. The sidewalk is too narrow for them to put tables out, so they have to, he wants it out on the street. And they try to reach two spaces that he could have, and they're going to supposedly fix that up, but it'll be from a certain date in May until the first of November, I think that's how it went. Um, and also, I suggested to the selectman, because years and years and years ago, it was suggested that Front Street be one-way. And I also suggested to them that this direction has to come from them, not BEC, not the Chamber of Commerce. They need to figure out what they want to do with Front Street. It really, they have to take some, something responsible, responsibility for ensuring that Front Street a new reward or, or whatever. So that's all I have to want to report, okay?
Okay, you're both welcome.
Alright, yeah, I have several items, um, first is Fall Town Meeting is Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm not anticipating that we're going to have any articles for that, but if even we are, then let me know, so I can get working on them. Spring Town Meeting is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Spring Town Meeting is four eight, twenty twenty-four, final language is two one nine twenty-four. So I'm anticipating that through our system to public hearings in December, but yeah.
You're kidding?
I'm not kidding.
That's awful.
Um, because that's where they, they want the final language one nine.
That's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
That is absolutely absurd.
Um, Six McDonald Terrace, um, we have a asphalt that is acceptable at this point in time. I was told they're recording the master deed tomorrow. And I know that, but that was a condition of your special perm, right? They have final inspections next week. We have a little seam in the parking lot where Mr. Burwick's property meets Mr. McGill's former property, who sold it now. And it's, um, it's not really a good seam. Um, but they are, the proposed solution is to hot glue, hot glue it sometime, he'd bring in a hot glue machine essentially. That's essentially what it is. And, um, they'll be doing that sometime, and he didn't give me a date, but he was, but hopefully in the next few weeks. So he's going to get his inspections next week. Um, does the board want me to sign off on a full CO or a temporary CO?
Well, I'm only trying to do this.
Yeah.
Seems like we should be okay with permanent one.
Okay.
Do you think, do you think that there's a chance they're not going to do it?
No, they'll do it, I think, I'm still holding sure. Alright.
There's probably a good, I have, that's my opinion.
Look, Mr. Burwick was here earlier, he had to leave, he was hoping to sit on us, he said it's going to happen next week.
Alright, this is the planning and development report, okay, this is not public comment. So hopefully it happens next week, and I'll sign off on a full one.
As long as you're holding sure, and if you make sure that it's done.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I have three dates for site visit for June, five twenty-three, five thirty, six six, they're Tuesdays. Um, we've been putting this off for a long time, um, it's site visit, so it doesn't have to be a posted meeting. Uh, because you can't comment, we're not deliberating on anything, um, what is everyone's preference?
Whatever you want.
How many days is it?
Five twenty-three?
Yeah.
Five thirty, or six six?
So you guys are best at your priorities being meeting.
I would, I would rather prefer this.
Alright, so I'll arrange.
In the morning?
No, we thought the afternoon.
Okay.
We thought, when I originally started to, I said like four, four, four-thirty in the afternoon or something. So that people, it's still light, you have plenty of light, what's your preference on time?
Four thirty.
Alright, let me see if I can get it for four thirty, um, that, that date. I may not be able to join you, but, um, I'll try, one vacation, I think? No.
What was the, wait a second.
Thirty, five thirty, that's what I'll, I'll arrange for. Alright.
Is there, is there a better time? I mean, do you, do you want to be honest, or do you want to just?
I'm, I'm going to try to make it.
Okay.
Does four work better for you?
No, four thirty actually works better.
Okay.
Or five, I mean, I have to do.
I mean, I just don't know how, who's coming on the tour, et cetera. I know that, um, I'm requested to tell the town administrator, the building commissioner, because they, they would like to tag along. And I think I'll invite the design review committee as well, because they were involved in the project here.
So four thirty is better.
Okay, so we'll, I'll arrange that and get back to you. I had some visit, visitors from Irvine Street the other night following up on their petition, um, I.
Reminded them.
On the seaside, on the seaside of Cituit site, the plans show two do not enter signs at a cobblestone, um, landing area, going from Thelma to Irvine Street. So because it wasn't supposed to be a through way.
Right.
And so I said I would ask the board, is there any interest in changing that condition, in changing that to be a gated, um, a gate?
I thought the fire products were put up to that.
It is possible to.
You need, like, as in a gate, can you kind of get?
No, a gate so that people can't get in, Google will send, apparently Google is sending people up Irvine Street to get to Thelma.
Oh, so a lot can't. Oh, so a lock gate, that's.
Right, a lock gate, I mean, you can do it with the fire department, it just needs they have a knockbox key.
Yeah.
Um, I have worked out with D P W that they're gonna put a do not enter or a dead end or no outlet sign at the beginning of Irvine. Um, so I'm trying to work on multiple levels, I've asked co-brothers for months now, I've been asking them to get their do not enter signs up. And maybe this kind of finally listening. Um, but is there any, I just said I'd ask your preliminary thoughts on the situation, are you, you willing to entertain that or not entertain that?
Uh, I'm, I mean, I'm, I don't care if it, if it's real electronic control through traffic. I mean, it seems like maybe you, you take the half of each resistance first, which is like dead end, no outlet
Right, right.
signs and stuff, and see how that works and.
All right, so you want to wait a little bit longer than the body has spoiled, okay?
And I think, I, I, I would think those signs probably work.
Okay, yeah, well, let's.
You know, because if people are just following, following, could get to that, it's just a lot of like, scoobear.
Now, excuse me, if fire department shows up on Irvine and there's a gate.
They have a knockbox key.
Okay, but is there a turnaround for them at, at, at the end of Irvine?
You will call this act, that's a bowl, yeah, there's, there's a whole, there's a whole paved bowl
Oh, yeah.
at the end of Irvine.
Yeah.
Yes, bye.
Right.
All right, okay, um.
But just to be clear, Karen, sort of my opinion is that they need to go to that. Then I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay, if we can't.
Me too.
But you were, you were the one, Anne, who said that the public carry, they want connections.
I like connections, I do.
So if we can't escalate this for anything for a sign, if we're forced to put it, then we'll have to put it, but that's our, that's our last one.
But I think this was not intended to be that connection of.
Right, it was for emergencies, also.
It was emergency, so.
All right, so, all right, so I'll, I'm gonna wait for a while, but if we have to bring it back to the board, we'll bring it back to the board. Um, three A compliance, we're getting technical assistance, our technical assistance should start, be starting in June. So hopefully after, you know, we get a little bit into it, we'll have some type of idea of what maybe they're recommending for us to um do. And, you know, to try to help us achieve compliance, we had said that we get the technical assistance from June through September. Um, that we would file, we would develop our articles for the, for the Spring Town Meeting, and we would have to have it would be a good idea to um go back to the selectmen and they'll have some type of public information on meeting as well.
I'm sorry, the compliance is.
The energy.
The, you know, the twelve hundred thirty nine units of that was supposed to be on form.
Oh, yeah.
So this is, this is.
It's technically called section three A compliance.
But, but it's, oh, uh, you said three A.
Wrong, okay, oh, no, section.
It's wrong with root three A.
I've been calling it M T A compliance, but it's really technically section three A compliance, um, et cetera, um. Does the board feel, I have a repeat, repeat violator for scenic road, you know, they removed stone walls.
Again, so.
I sent them a letter, then they removed it again, does the board feel I should be filing for this?
Yes, yes, where is it?
I'll tell you later.
All right.
Um, that's all I have at the moment.
At the selectmen's meeting, maybe it was the board that, they go, like, whatever, uh, eventually the new water treatment plant will come before us, because then at some point.
I'm supposed to have an informal meeting later this month, um, with, with, with the project, so I would invoke the chair and um conservation as well, that's what I've been told. Who knows the status of that?
Right.
There's, there's, there's an E N F out on the street for that right now.
Just a request on that is, let's not see it when it's like ninety eight percent paid.
That's what I've been asking, that's exactly what I've been asking, if you would like me to elaborate in that meeting, I will, we can have two people. I will let you know.
Depends what state I live in.
Okay, I will let you know, um, but it is, we're, we scheduled designer duty committee meeting for the twenty third at six thirty for eight seventeen Country Way.
And I was just, oh, it's twelve percent, not twenty.
Okay.
So Ben, this is our meeting with you.
That's correct.
He did, I was thinking of, I was.
Sorry to see you go, this is a good token for us, so everybody, don't forget to vote, we have an open seat, and we will be looking for all to make plus of the else for our board, sorry to see you go, I learned a lot from you, I hope I can retain confidence what you said. You've got a real name, so I can ask those questions, which I don't always remember, because you covered it at a very different aspect than I do. You taught me a lot on Wednesday, we, how we did find, I really appreciate that.
Wow, thank you, thank you, Robert, putting up a meeting.
It's unflattering, never.
It really is.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm stepping aside because I can't put in a tire now that this seat is owed, and it's not fair for the people of the town for me to just keep dragging.
But you've done great, you know, you really have.
Thank you. Well, nobody ever says thank you for working on the planning board, for planning board thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll hold you to it if, if your time comes free again.
You want.
Yeah, no, I, I see myself staying involved in specific stuff, but this board hits, here's a little bit of a heavy lift with the hallmark, I think.
Yeah, I understand.
We've got to get this done with time right now.
Well, you have babies.
Well, they're not babies, now it's busier.
Yeah.
It doesn't get, it doesn't get easier, just gets different.
Yeah, it did, it did get more.
Yeah, just.
So it's easier on me.
Ramboches, the other day.
Yeah, we're more cautious.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Well, thanks for your service.
Yep.
We never, we appreciate you.
Ben, I appreciate you.
Um, make a motion, objection, accept.
On favor?
I.